So let's stand and do the pledge allegiance first, please.
Okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. So, um, the first item on the agenda is public comment, but it's public comment not related to the items, the actual public hearing or the work session? So I don't know if anybody has any public comment that's not related to the items on the agenda.
Any public comments that not related to the item on the agenda, the estuary plan? Okay, hearing, no public comments?
I have more to say.
Where to sign up? Say that again? Yes. We just, general public comments, you can come up and make a comment now at the podium if you'd like, but this is really for the cabamp, the estuary plan management, and those comments would be during the work session. So if you have something about the estuary plan management, that would be held off until we have the work session. Okay? And do they need to sign up to be able to testify?
Right. So, um, the process tonight is we're going to go through the work session. There's no public comment at the work session. We cut that off on the third. Those comments have been all forwarded to you. Um, so we're going to discuss that when we close the work session. Then we will open hearings on the matter. And it will start out with the Board of Commissioners hearing and then City of North Bend and then City of Coos Bay. Um, and when we do that part, when you're not part of the hearings body, if you will please turn your microphones off and not engage. And if you're not comfortable doing that, you can also step down. So, welcome to tonight's continuation of the work session for the Coos Bay Estuary Management Plan. I want to thank everyone for their attendance and especially the decision makers. It was a lot of information that I sent you guys. So, um, this is a reminder that the work session comment period closed January 3rd, 2024. Staff did provide all the comments to the decision makers. Any testimony that was received after that period? It's that one. I think it's that computer. I'm not on, I'm not logged on. Did that work?
Nope.
Okay. Is that better? I think we figured it out.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay. So this is a reminder that the work session comment period closed on January 3rd of 2024, and staff did provide all the comments to the decision makers. Any testimony received after that time period is considered comments in the actual public hearing. So no comments were actually missed. Um, the work session will start with some background, um, and then some discussion with the committee and the staff. So feel free when I'm reading any of this stuff or going through anything, if you have questions or comments, and I feel bad because I'm not looking over there too. So just a little history. So the Coos Bay Estuary Management Plan, the original draft in ninety-eight, or nineteen eighty, came from a five-year effort by local government, state and federal officials and citizens. The history noted that the development of the plan was slow and a bit frustrating. It's been really slow through this process as well. Um, this is of value in reflecting the plan's historical, um, record though. In April and May of seventy-nine, the Coos County Board of Commissioners decided to develop an intergovernmental coordination group for the Coos Bay Estuary Management Plan. Various state and federal agencies and local governments were to cooperate in formulating a management plan that will provide, um, the best and that was provided by WIST and the best use of the bay's resources. Um, so the Board of Commissioners delegated the Coos Curie Council of Governments to act as lead agency for the project. An intergovernmental team was formed, also known as the Inner Agency Task Force. The first meeting was held in July sixteenth of nineteen seventy-nine. After many meetings and discussions, the formulation of the plan and background information was turned over to the county planning department to correct and complete. The Coos Bay Estuary Management Plan involves a merit of complex conversation or conservation and development decisions collectively reached by participants of the Inner Agency Task Force, which include officials from local government, state, federal agencies. These decisions were the outcomes of negotiation and process leading to a consensus conclusion. The process involved creating focus groups such as economic development or natural resources. The reason this was done was to create a balance plan while working within the regulatory framework. So Coos County, the City of Coos Bay and North Bend each drafted specific zoning land development ordinances measures to implement the adopted Coos Bay Estuary Management Plan. Those have been adopted by the individual jurisdictions. The original intention was not to divide the plan, but the absence of clear future process has led to that current situation. This does not imply that each plan has not been found to be in compliance and acknowledged by Land Conservation Development Commission as compliant with relevant state statutes, rules, and goals. However, it does highlight the need to bring the plan back to its intended condition for future processes. Having one document is logical for a complete comprehensive review and other than leaving the document divided up between the jurisdictions. So basically, I'm here to discuss what we did in the scope. So the scope was to eliminate as many changes as possible, still bring the plan into one cohesive plan. Otherwise, if you're going to do a review, you have three different, um, sets of basically plans, policies, codes to review, and that's a huge undertaking. So we needed a starting point. So this is what we, we planned to do was to bring it back into one. We had to eliminate the conflicts. That's the definitions. Um, and there are just a few of the definitions that are in conflict. And when I say in conflict, I mean conflict between the three jurisdictions. So what we did was we went with whatever goal sixteen was, or if it dealt with floodplain, we went with whatever the floodplain rule was, so that we were in, being consistent with the law. And then we had to change, um, the future process update. Because if we did not choose, change the future process update, plan, um, policies, then we're in the same predicament. We don't have a process to move forward. So that third thing I asked you guys for last time was also to accept the digitized map. And I know there was a lot of conversation about policy three, how policy three works. Um, and basically, it's just a layered map index. We're not doing away with any plan maps. We're still using them for regulatory purposes. We want to be able to use one digitized map that we are confident that has went through a rigorous process that matches the original map. The rest of the maps, we will retain, and even if there ends up being a conflict, we kept the other one as a historical document so we could reference it. So, we received a lot of testimony. I do want to remind everybody, the testimony is all basically preferences. There isn't a lot of stuff, there isn't any sites to statute goals, rules that say that we have not actually complied with the regulations. So it's always great to get opinions on things, but we are bound by the law, and we need to make sure that we comply with it. So I was curious if you had any questions about the changes specifically?
Wouldn't this be in, I don't know if this would be the appropriate spot, and now I've lost my thing. Oh, thank you. What, one of the questions, Ashley had called me last night with some questions. There was only one part. I was curious about, um, let's see, definition of structure in one component for consistency, consistent with floodplain definition, bottom of page eleven. Was it, I don't know if you got this or not. Okay, you've got it, good. Uh, it was just a, a change in the definition of structure that moved its present definition of, um, anything constructed, installed, portable. It became more specific to a walled and roofed building, including a gas or liquid storage tank. And looking at, just thinking of the word structure, I, I thought it would be more broad. So I, I don't know if something changed or what, so I was going to ask about it.
And I guess I'll just, um, note that where it says the City of Coos Bay's, was that more broad in, in the volume three, the our currently adopted estuary plan? In our implementing ordinances, we actually, um, define it based on the floodplain definition, which is a walled and roofed building. So I think it's a matter of we just haven't got to where we updated our definition of structure to, to match that and be consistent. So I think it does make sense at this point to move towards the one that meets the definition of a floodplain, for floodplain purposes.
I, I understood the walled and roofed. I, I just wasn't sure why gas or liquid storage tanks made its way in there. It seemed constrictive.
Yeah. Can you hear me? Yes, okay. So for the City of Coos Bay, in our existing comprehensive plan, volume three, which is the city's currently adopted estuary management plan, there is a definition that happens to be more broad. And in our implementing ordinances, we actually have a definition that matches the floodplain regulation definition that it should be. And so it's just a matter of the City of Coos Bay hasn't yet, had not yet updated its definition in the comprehensive plan to match the implementing ordinances, which should match the floodplain regulations. So, you making the change as proposed is consistent with the, um, following floodplain regulations, and it's what makes sense to do. Are there any questions, other questions? Are there any questions about, uh, the proposed resolution that we sent you guys as a draft? Really, none, guys?
I thought, you said, I was a little lost because there's so much here. I thought it might be worthwhile for you to imagine in your update to us about citizen involvement and about how we're going to include the citizen community, even though it's not included either. And to Mr. Graybill's comments, we look forward to working on this process.
Yes. I actually would urge you guys to go ahead and as soon as this is adopted, to do those committees. Because in the long run, it's going to be a long process, and so you should start now. But my thought is, you need to adopt this future process to be able to engage the citizens, to be able to engage the technical advisory, to be able to, to develop the steering committee. And if you don't have that process in place, then you're left relying on your local codes, which don't cover the Coos Bay Estuary Management Plan.
I just have a comment. I'm, I'm pretty tickled tonight to see a little bit more participation from the industry side. So I think the work's getting out, and we've got some people here. Tonight, that's, uh, industry pro, so I'm glad that we're seeing a new list of people.
So if we don't have anything else, and you don't need me to go over anything specifically, um, we're going to close this joint work session, and we're going to move to, um, our public hearing. Now, if you want to speak for the county's public hearing, I need you to take a sign-in sheet and sign in. And so staff, um, is also going to give you a list of what the relevant criteria is, and it is very helpful if you cite what criteria you're actually discussing in your testimony.
Okay, good evening, everybody. Uh, I hereby call the Coos County Hearing on file number AM twenty-two zero zero five to order on January tenth, twenty twenty-four at six fifteen PM. Uh, this is a time and place for a public hearing in the matter to consider ordinance number twenty-three zero six zero zero five PL in the matter of amending the Coos Bay Estuary Management Plan and Zoning and Land Development Ordinance. Oral presentations should begin by stating your name, address, and identifying the criteria you will be addressing. The staff will present the merits of the matter and the relevant criteria for the Board of Commissioners to consider. Testimony that is not directed toward relevant criteria will not be considered in the final decision. All testimony shall be directed toward the decision makers. Those wishing to testify shall focus the substance of the testimony toward the criteria, endorse rather than repeat testimony of others, and clearly and accurately state your issues when testifying. Please turn off all cell phones and be aware that these hearings are being recorded, and all other discussion should take place outside the hearing room to allow for clear recording. Parties that have signed up for testimony will be allotted three minutes. All written testimony shall be provided to staff for the record. Staff, please read the ordinance by title, provide the legal procedures, and present the matter.
Thank you. So pursuant to the land use procedures, um, Coos County Zoning and Land Development Ordinance, section five point seven three hundred and ORS one ninety-seven point seven sixty-three. A party may either represent themselves or be represented by an attorney. Consultants and other non-attorney professionals may appear as fact witnesses but not legally represent a party. Witnesses testifying on behalf of an organization must provide written documentation that they are authorized by that organization to appear and testify. Testimony and evidence must be directed towards the identified criteria related to the application or other criteria in the Coos County Comprehensive Plan or zoning ordinance which you believe applies to the application. The applicant, which is the county, has the proof, which means to demonstrate that all applicable criteria can be met. An issue which may be the basis for an appeal to the land use board of appeals shall be raised no later than the close of the record at the final evidentiary hearing on the proposal. Failure to raise an issue and present statements or evidence clearly in a manner sufficient to allow the Board of the Commissioners or any party to respond will preclude an appeal to the land use board of appeals on that matter, or on that issue. So again, this is ordinance number twenty-three dash zero six dash zero zero five PL in the matter of amending the Coos Bay Estuary Management Plan and the Zoning and Land Development Ordinance, um, county file number AM dash twenty-two dash zero zero five. So the first question is, did each board member receive their January third staff reports?
I guess.
Thank you. Um, so the formal application to move this profit, process forward was started on December twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-two with a public work session. All products that were posed to include the plan, ordinance, and code were posted online. Um, this has been over a year ago. Since that timeframe, staff with the assistance of the consultants has continued to address and accommodate public input. The last work session held on December seventh, twenty twenty-three challenged staff to scale the changes back to be able to bring the plan together to minimal changes necessary to allow one digital, one digitized map to be used and correct any conflicting issues raised by merging of the documents. The changes were listed out in guidance memo released on December twentieth, twenty twenty-three. Uh, the memo described the scope of work and went through the changes. The memo itself was a tool to be used with the plan to help understand the changes and why they were completed. A line-by-line review was requested, so staff answered that request in the December twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three memo with a more detailed memo of specific languages, changes. Staff provided a copy of the statewide planning goals sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, along with the adoption amendment dates of the, for the decision makers to make reference in case there are questions. The staff report was completed on January third, twenty twenty-four with the following attachments. Ordinance number twenty-three dash zero six dash zero zero five PL, the December twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three memo, the revised Coos County Zoning and Land Development Ordinance, Chapter Three, the revised Coos County Comprehensive Plan, Volume Two, Part One, the timeline of the progression of the updated effort. Comments received, um, up to January second of twenty twenty-three. Uh, the resolution twenty-three dash twelve dash two six two PL, which is a resolution of the Coos County Board of Commissioners, Oregon, evidencing a commitment to coordinate with City of Coos Bay and the City of North Bend to work towards a completion of a comprehensive update and a multi-jurisdictional Coos Bay Estuary Management Plan. All testimony has been forwarded, um, up through this morning. If anything came in this afternoon, um, hopefully you've gotten a copy of it. So for the county, the relevant criteria should be focused on testimony. Article five point one, plan amendments and rezones. Five point one, one hundred legislative amendments. Section five point one, one one zero, who may seek changes. Section five point one, point one one five, alteration of a recommendation amendment by the planning director. Section five point one, point one two zero, procedures for legislative amendments. Section five point one, point one two five, minor text corrections. Uh, section five point one, point one three zero, need for studies. Section five point one, point one three five, status of hearings body recommendation to the Board of Commissioners. The planning commission did hear the matter, um, and make recommendations. However, the recommendations that the county planning, um, commission made actually is what started this need for this work session. So, um, they felt that there needed to be, uh, a little bit more definition in the citizen involvement program, and that's why we did start having these work sessions. A hearings body recommendation for approval with conditions shall not itself amend the ordinance or constitute a final decision. And it didn't. Um, and then the next relevant criteria are Oregon statewide planning goals. One, citizen involvement. Two, land use planning. Three, agricultural lands. Four, forest lands. Five, natural resources, scenic historical areas and open space. Six, air, water, and land resources. Seven, areas subject to natural hazards. Eight, recreational needs. Nine, economic development. Ten, housing. Eleven, public facilities and services. Twelve, transportation. Thirteen, energy conservation. Fourteen, urbanization. Sixteen, estering resources. Seventeen, coastal shorelands. Eighteen, beaches and dunes. And nineteen is ocean resources, which is actually not applicable to this plan. The focus of this plan is basically the coastal goals, so that's sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen. And that's it.
Okay. At this time, we will take testimony, so please make sure you're signed up to provide comments. We don't want to miss anybody. And, uh, the order of the testimony will be, uh, uh, proponents' testimony, and then following that will be opponents' testimony, and then the staff clothing, closing. Excuse me. Uh, first up is Michael Graybill. Mr. Graybill? Good evening.
Good evening. Uh, is this, is, is this working? It's green?
If it's green, you're on.
All right, my name's Mike Graybill, uh, and thank you. I, I signed up to be a neutral party because I'm very much in support of the revision of the plan. Uh, and I have offered, I've offered written testimony, hopefully that you've received by the January third deadline, and then today I've provided a summary of that information. And I'd like to address how this body approaches citizen participation and when you queue that in this plan revision process. And I've made recommendation for three, uh, motions for your consideration. One of them has to do with this revision of the, of the maps, and I am in support of a motion that would incorporate the new digitized maps for use by the planning staff. And the other two recommendations have to do with when you would queue the citizen advisory committees. Uh, there's citizen advisory groups have been redefined through this plan, this part of the plan revision process. Uh, and, uh, the question then becomes, do you, do you constitute these committees after you amend the plan that defines them? Or should you constitute a committee to test drive, uh, that, uh, structure of those revised plans? My recommendation is that you, uh, postpone amending the plan to describe these committees until you've found out if they actually work. Uh, so my recommendation would be for you to use your existing authority to appoint a committee that may be structured exactly as that proposed uh, in the draft, uh, revision document, uh, and, uh, assign them the task of reading this very complicated document and giving you a report. Because the purpose of those advisory groups is to advise you on how to move forward. And I would suggest that you, you have, could use your existing authority to commission a committee uh, that would test drive the proposed structure in these draft revisions, uh, and then get a report back to you. My comments, my one-page comments that I've provided hard copies with you today uh, indicate, at least in my view, that it's not necessary to amend the plan to appoint a committee. Uh, you already have that authority, you can assign them. The, my hope here is that this, uh, committee that would be appointed would be at, at your direction uh, with, set with the parameters that you would have for it so that we could augment the work and provide an opportunity to build capacity to tackle this next stages of this very complicated process. So, uh, thank you very much for my opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Graybill. All right, and, uh, I'm going to put these in order of, it looks like we have, uh, all neutral here, so the proponent-opponent, uh, timing phasing does not apply. Next up is Donna Bonetti.
Hi, I'm Donna Bonetti. I live in North Bend on nineteen ninety-seven Oak Street. I'm one of the people who put in, um, a written comment, um, by the third. But I'm understanding now that there've been some amendments and changes, and I've seen the twenty-two-page summary and not really had much time to wrap my head around that. But apparently, the whole document is seven hundred and something pages. And so I'm not sure what portions have changed at that, that I was addressing on, uh, January third. And it, it seems like maybe, um, maybe that having comments before changes occurred doesn't seem quite fair. And that's all I have to say.
All right, thank you. Uh, next up is Steve Miller.
I want to thank the commissioners, the city councilors, and the planning staff for their extensive work toward completing this phase one partial update of the Coos Bay Estuary Management Plan. I see that this has required a very demanding effort by commissions and councils of Coos County and the cities of North Bend and Coos Bay. It's required much staff time, I know, and, which has extended well beyond their ongoing responsibilities. I appreciate Mike Graybill's I appreciate Mike Graybill's careful examination of the details and progress of the updating process and for identifying the important role Oregon land use planning law requires for citizen participation in all parts of the local land use management and the changes made to land use management plans themselves. I've gained a better understanding of this complex process as a result of that. I would encourage a careful examination of Mike's important clarifying comments and questions that have risen from review of the December 28 staff report being discussed at tonight's joint work session. I support the three motions he recommends for action by the city councils and the Coos County Board of Commissioners. First, to amend the estuary management plan to include the digital versions of the original Mylar maps. Second, to appoint a committee of citizens to read the current draft of the plan to identify and recommend possible clarifications and edits, and to provide a report to the elected officials responsible for revising the plan. And third, to postpone action on further amendments until after the Citizens Committee report is received. These actions would enhance this update's recognition of statewide planning goal number one, to quote, "provide the opportunity for citizens to be involved in all phases of the planning process," end quote. Also, this collaboration would not impede further work reviewing the estuary management plan that could be ongoing during the Citizens Committee reading of the draft and writing of its report to the county and cities. A representative of DLCD joined a recent joint work session meeting by Zoom. She affirmed that the agency's seeking of funding for further work on the Coos Bay estuary plan revision is ongoing and would not be contingent on approval of this first piece of the plan update that incorporates the incremental changes that have been identified thus far. Thanks for receiving my comments.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Next up is Jamie Faraday.
I'm more used to addressing a class of seventh graders, so excuse me if this is a little elementary, but that's my gig.
Down a notch. Took me a bit.
And, thank you, John.
As a gentle reminder, we do need a name and...
Jamie Faraday.
Thank you.
1017 Elm Avenue, Coos Bay. I left you with some visuals in front of you. This one is from 1895 of our estuary. This one is from 1967. Just a way for it. As we contemplate the revision of this important document, it makes sense to revisit some history of the place to give us all some perspective. The charts I've given you were created 72 years apart. As is common with most deep port estuaries, extensive development ensued within the tidelands and the channel since settlement by Europeans. From recent calculations, the Coos Estuary has lost between 75% and 85% of its tidelands. Most of this development has occurred in the time between these charts were made, the first in 1895 and second in 1967. Five years after this latest chart was made, the United States enacted the Clean Water Act, responded the Coastal Management Act, which guides what we are doing today with the CBAM, and created the Estaran Research Reserves as well as the Coastal Management Act. South Slough was the first of the reserves to be established here. So last century, we, as citizens and policymakers, decided that covering wetlands, channelizing all parts of estuaries, and deepening and widening channels with no limits wasn't a good thing for all of us. Balanced efforts between environmental values and commercial endeavors were the talk and goals of documents from Goal 16 to the mission of the Port of Coos Bay. Of course, the balance between development and preservation or restoration from 1972 to present has been of what we have left, as is indicated by the maps, the charts. Yeah, think of these charts as radiographs of somebody's lungs after a period of loss, tissue loss from breathing in unhealthy environment like coal mining or smoking. Balanced questions, keep mining or smoking, or add back some healthy tissue by abstinence and restorative exercise. For our estuary, little restoration or reversing the trend of wetland loss has taken place. Mitigation is notoriously flawed practice as a known at loss strategy of the calculation to keep the other values of estuaries intact and/or enhance these values. What this estuary needs, what we need to grow food, have clean water, check floods, and even add to the ability to sequester carbon, is restoration of the values of these places. What are these values? I'm running out of time. To sum up, we have started late in the game as regards to stewardship. The estuary is damaged in its ability to perform these ecological services. We need to shift our industry to enhance the other values which already support us with food, jobs, clean water, enjoyment, et cetera. This means not removing more wetlands. Thank you for the opportunity to...
Thank you. And I left my, the rest of those guys. Ashley...
Ashley Dickey. I'm going to see you try it.
Well, I can't, I can't even tell what the letters are, so it's... Ah, Dickey. Okay. Well, there you go. Thank you.
The first day of school is always really fun, so that's where I'm like, I'll give you a shot there. Well, hello. My name is Ashley Ah Dickey. I'm here representing Row Climate. Should've given a letter authorization there. Happy New Year. It has been a year since the first open house happened for this current Phase 1 update of the Coos Bay Estuary Management Plan. There's been a lot of work from the planners over the last year showcasing the willingness to work with community and civic groups. We have appreciated opportunities to engage in public comment and participate in what's truly a democratic process. At the December 7th meeting, the jurisdictions agreed to scale back the proposed amendment, given demonstrated concerns about shifts in text, the failure to identify those differences, and the possibility of more problems. Those testifying advocated for the value of the public's involvement, as we see here tonight, in the process and explained how difficult it has been to review such complex and lengthy documents and understand the basis for extensive substantive amendments and how they could operate holistically. They raised concerns about unintended consequences. Now, since that last meeting, I wondered how many folks have been able to go through the three different versions of meeting packets. There's been more than 600 pages of each of those packets between December 21st, 28th, and January 3rd. This process has also conflicted with the holiday season, a time when many travel or spend time with their friends and families. The amount of changes that have happened have made it challenging for community members and organizations to engage effectively to understand where we're at right now. So, we have concerns that adopting the latest round of revisions for the cabant process undermines the dedication and commitment of community members to engage in this civic and democratic process. The people in this room here tonight have been showing up time after time because they do care about what happens in this crucial management plan. I know there's like a sense of urgency to get Phase 1 adopted, but it's not really necessary tonight. Department of Land Conservation staff have confirmed that Phase 1 of the cabant does not have to be adopted to seek funding for Phase 2. What is needed is either a resolution or a letter of intent to collaborate on a comprehensive update. One action that can happen tonight is to adopt that resolution prepared by the planners. We do not have issues with decision-makers approving that existing resolution now. Further solutions include continuing the adoption process to have time for community members and civic groups to review the materials. An additional, anywhere from 14 to even 60 days would be suggested. Also, opportunity for community members to have more direct dialogue with planners and decision-makers to understand the changes happening more fully. We also appreciate other proposals from community members, such as Mike Graybill's. Between the time and need of clarity for new edits, we recommend that Phase 1 is not adopted tonight. We encourage decision-makers to pass a resolution and to allow for extension for review of new materials. It's taken a while to get to this point, so what is the rush to complete it tonight? We ask jurisdictions to commit to making this an accessible community process. And speaking of accessibility, I have some papers, because let's just say, there's a lot of things happening around town tonight, and there are folks that were not able to meet that written comment deadline, and were hoping to be here tonight. And so I do have comments from community members that wanted decision-makers to review, so if that's okay to distribute. And also I have a copy of Annie Merrill's comment, too. Okay. Thank you.
So you're going to pass those around?
Yeah.
All right. Okay. Next up, while we're doing that, Annie Merrill is up. Is, I don't, is Annie here?
She's online.
She's online. There we go.
Hi. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Great. Thank you for the opportunity to testify today. My name is Annie Merrill. I am speaking on behalf of Oregon Shores Conservation Coalition. We have submitted two letters asking for an extension of the written comment period and a continuance of the public hearings to delay plan adoption until the public has had time to review the new version of the plan and comment on the proposed changes. Only some members of the public were sent the new version of the plan, and staff reports were on December 29th and given four days to review and comment before the January 3rd deadline, two of which were holidays. We believe this is inadequate time for public engagement. In public notices about the meeting today, it was also not clear that the goal was to vote on final plan adoption, so many were unaware of the existence and gravity of this hearing. While most of the latest updates reflect what was assigned at the last work session, which is to dial back the revisions made to the plan, new text was also added, which requires more careful consideration before voting on plan adoption. Oregon Shores is mostly satisfied with the changes that were made. However, we have specific comments on the new plan that we believe warrants further discussion. Due to time constraints for testimony, I have emailed my full testimony to all planners, and my colleague has provided a hard copy for your review. First, the new plan language that describes the citizen advisory committee and the technical committee favors development interests, which is inconsistent with the language of Goal 16 and the resolution. Our recommended text addition to rectify this is in red. Given the language describing these committees will govern all future plan processes, unlike the resolution, it is imperative that the description of the committees embodies a balance between development and environmental protection. The public process is not detailed in the steps for jurisdictional plan amendment, aside from two formal hearings before the Board of Commissioners. Future processes should also include a 60-day public comment period and formal hearings before all planning commissions and city councils. Please see the text in my full testimony to show where specific definitions were also changed. The definition of structure was altered, and the more specific definition could have potential consequences for development proposals because it omits other kinds of structures like ramps, dikes, docks, cables, et cetera. Policy 2 also underwent edits, which deleted reference to other policies and special conditions, which may fundamentally change the purpose of the natural management unit. Policy 3 still needs clarification to make it enforceable without the existence of a special considerations map, and there should be reference to the individual maps needed to enforce each of the 21 policies in the special policies section of the plan in order to implement the plan before the maps are updated in the comprehensive revision. The digitized Mylar versions of these original regulatory maps should be adopted, and their file names should be consistent in the plan. These map files could be hyperlinked in the plan to make it more clear. With these issues resolved, we would feel more comfortable adopting this new plan draft. However, tonight, we're not ready. We kindly ask that decision-makers continue the hearing to allow for full public review of this new draft and adopt the plan at a later hearing. We do support each jurisdiction adopting the draft resolution tonight to commit to a more comprehensive update with more thorough public participation in the future. We recommend this resolution include the suggested language changes offered by CT Clusey in written comment. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you very much. Next up, we have Dean Lundry.
Hello? Oh, okay.
And I love this river, and my name's Dean Lundry. The address that I gave this evening is 6750 Highway 126 Florence, Oregon. I brought two visual aids with me tonight. This is, I haven't had a chance to read it, but this is the, what I think is what we're talking about, is the Coos Bay Estuary Management Plan. I just got it hot off the press. It's going to take me a little bit to figure it out. I'm not a firehouse lawyer, and I've told a lot of people here. I have a hat in both camps, although my, my heart is with Mother Nature. That, that, that's, I'm speaking for myself, Dean Lundry. I own a lot of property, waterfront property here, and this will affect my properties, but I also have a nonprofit nature studying called the Divine Nature Academy. One of our places is the old Coos Bay Boat Building Center, which is a shallow draft pier, but the other pier that we bought is a, it's not a toxic waste dump. It's, it's clean. It's the, the old Unical Oil Terminal Dock. We're being very careful, extremely careful of, you know, Unical left the pipe, abandoned them in place, and we're being very careful. My, I don't know anything about, like I say, I love ships. I worked eight years as a boilermaker-rigger. I love ships. It's a very good transportation thing. I personally have supported Communist China. I'm in Harbor Freight every day. You know, I have no qualms with, 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 with economic development, whatever, whatever you call it. My beef is I want to make sure that the, that the railroad is not involved in any of this environmental planning or work. And would someone ask me why I feel that?
Why?
Ah. Thank you. The railroad has been working, they just pulled out day before yesterday. They've been working at my marina, which I had for sale for like 1-point-something million. I don't know. I own the Coos Bay, the Cushman Marina and RV Park. It's a small town. It's not a very big town. Right now, there's only like five people and four dogs. One of them mine. The railroad trestle cuts my town in half. I own both sides. There was a reason for it, and this is one of the reasons. I want to make sure that our environment is protected. The reason I bought both sides of the railroad trestle was to make sure that the 1070 liquid propane didn't go across the bridge. The bridge is too old. Railroads have, you know, we know, we know what their problems are, and they go oops. Well, we don't want to see an oops in this deal. I know all about environmental disasters. The biggest naturally, naturally man-made environmental disaster is going on right now on the diversion of the Sacramento River. I know this for a fact because my 40-acre ranch, riverfront ranch, was stolen by Nature Conservancy and U.S. Fish and Wildlife at the point of a gun. So I left California. They stole my water rights. They made it look like I removed natural objects from a nature preserve. I mean, they stole my property to take over the river. They're diverting the Sacramento River. 9,000 cubic feet per second is going to be diverted from the delta in San Francisco. They've killed that, they've killed, the oxygenated water and from the Sacramento River is no longer going to go into the ocean. That is, we can't do anything about that. Oh, back to the railroad. Okay. There are, there's a work window, in-water work, which we're talking about, in-water work. There are only four months that you're allowed... There are only four months that you are allowed to work in the water in the state of Oregon. November, December, January, February, the worst months to try and do any work in the water. I know this for a fact because I had...Billiter was originally gonna do it, and they wasted a year on me. I originally contacted Billiter to put five pilings in at Cushman for $50,000. They waltzed me out of the work window and said, "Oh, we have million-dollar deals." They were down here in Coos Bay. So Rich Wonky with Great Western Corporation put in five brand-new 80-foot pilings on the upriver side. Recently, like I say, the railroad just pulled out, their contractor just pulled out day before yesterday. They started working on that railroad bridge. They blocked my launch ramp, crushed two docks, started working in July, August, and September, and October, November, December, and January. They pulled out a couple days ago, four months before any one of us could possibly...anyway, so this is what they put on my piling. They didn't even...I asked them to help me with the electricity, and they laughed at me, their contractor. This is the railroad. They put this on my piling. I pulled it out. It says, "Warning: Lead work area poisoned, no smoking or eating." They destroyed my business. Two months is all I get. I normally have about 16 boats that tie up on my 200-foot concrete docks, which no one can use anymore. They're not allowed. I know all about the in-work window. They worked four months before the window. They had this lead paint raining down in the fishing...they worked during the fishing season, blocked the...blocked the both sides with their spud barges, causing the wake to do damage. They did it...they were riveting and raining this old lead paint down during the fishing season. So my beef is with the railroad. I don't want them involved with anything to do with...I know about corporate stuff because I'm from Florence.
Mr. Lundry. Thank you. Thank you for that. Thank you. Appreciate that.
That's all I have to say about that. Thank you very much.
Very good.
Are you sure?
No. We'll talk. Thank you. Thank you for putting up with me. Thank you very much.
All right. Ken Bonetti.
I live at 1997 Oak Street in North Bend. Oh, okay. I live at 1997 Oak Street, North Bend. My name's Ken Bonetti. First, I'd like to thank the work that you've all done to this point on this important document. I have a few comments, however. Please commit to forefunding of Phase 2. We seem ready...you seem ready to finalize this plan with no firm commitment to proceed with and properly fund Phase 2 revisions. We need a firm commitment. Coos Bay planners promised to include community voices in the process by providing accessible information and an opportunity for public review and input. Instead, and despite very late changes to the document, with no firm commitment to Phase 2, a decision seems to have been made to finalize Phase 1 of the CBMP update at this meeting. This change in schedule unduly shortcuts community input in the process, in a process that has no mandated deadline. General wording for the composition of the citizens and technical committees has been specified. I still prefer a more explicit committee composition while devising an efficient process for necessary changes. Otherwise, how will the public know that a composition...that the composition of the citizens advisory committee and the technical committee is balanced and representative? Importantly, this section should be included in the body of the update rather than in a separate resolution, thereby making it weaker. I'm confused as to the real distinction between major and minor amendments to the CBMP. It seems this distinction is not so clear-cut as is assumed between single parcel amendments and those amendments that may have baywide impacts. Why couldn't there be a potential spillover effects of single parcel amendments? Might there be precedents established by a minor amendment or an accumulation of such that imposes baywide impacts or constitutes an alternate alteration to...of principle not in keeping with the spirit of the management plan? It seems some minor amendments might probably require broader citizen technical input and technical input than is envisioned here. Perhaps a mechanism can be established to identify and address potentially broader implications implied by putatively minor amendments. There seems to be...there needs to be more clarity with respect to definitions specified between pages five and 13 in the staff report. It's unclear which definitions will ultimately be used. In some cases, there are considerable differences among...and concerning differences among definitions, jurisdictions, for example, the definition of structure. Please commit to an update that fully addresses climate change, climate justice, and adaptation with in-depth community involvement. And finally, all local tribes need to be included in all steps in the update process and ongoing management of Coos Bay Estuary. So thank you for your...my opportunity to speak before you. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Next up is Dana Gob. Well, I could read it.
I guess my writing was good.
Yes.
What I'm gonna share with you is, I'm not gonna mention the Estuary Management Plan, but in my opinion, it's directly related. And in close to 50 years of observing the highway between North Bend and Coos Bay and Coos Bay and North Bend, I've noticed mountains of logs and chips, and chips and logs. And when I came to town, it was the longest...the largest lumber shipping port in the world. Evans Products had been out of business for only about 10 years, I think. And...but unfortunately, I haven't seen any value added to our resource that's going...to any of our resources that are going out of the bay. I think that the economic developers in this community ought to read Fine Home Building or the Journal of Light Construction, and they would find that there is immense amount of products that are being produced out of wood, timbers and chips. Chips are being made into a highly regarded insulation. I know that one place in Maine is doing that. Cross-laminated timbers, with plenty of wood going out, not doing anything with that. There's a large amount of panels of all forms being structurally put together with wood. So, anyway, I think it's a pretty golden opportunity to provide some work in this community, other than what we're going to be looking at in the future, which is with all the buildup around here about the hotels and such, other than service-oriented work. And I'm not putting that down whatsoever, but I think there's some other opportunities for us. So, anyway, I'd like to close with a quote from somebody's life that I really admire. And it's...boy, at the moment, I'm somewhat...it lost her to get started.
I hate it when that happens to me. You've had a long time to.
Okay, here we go. Boy, it's...it is right when we trend to...boy. I'm sure there's some people in this room that know it, but yeah. It's right when we tend to...boy, Jamie?
It's Aldo Leopold, right? Aldo Leopold?
Yes.
I had it in my question for 10 years. The thing is right when biological...
That comes later.
Does anyone have a smartphone?
That got it going. It's right when the trend is to...
I think I found it for you, Dana.
It's right when we...
The thing is right when it tends to preserve the integrity, stability...
When we preserve...boy. When we preserve the integrity and solidity and the beauty of the biotic community, it's wrong when we trend otherwise. And that was Aldo Leopold from Sand County Almanac, and I apologize that...boy, the words just went out of my brain. I will throw one other thing in to there, too. Sand County Almanac. Sand County is Wisconsin, and Wisconsin's pretty well been strip-mined, not for wood but for sand, for the fracking industry, and most of it shipped by train loads out west for fracking for natural gas, which is an extreme climate disruptor. So, anyway, I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next up is Anna Marie Slate. Your direction is just fine.
I'll be really short with this. I will be really short with what I'm saying.
That's why you had to pull the mic down.
I would suggest that you do not adopt Phase 1. Pass the resolution. The resolution commits to a Phase 2 and creates community committees, and I would say, slow down. The future of the estuary needs community voices.
Thank you very much. Okay. I am at the end of the comment sheets. Is there anyone else who has a desire to make a comment? Oh, we have another one. We have one more.
Yeah. Hi. I'm Karen Richardson. I'm from Coos Bay, North Bend. I was born in Coos Bay, and I grew up...or I live in North Bend. And I'm a studio artist, so maybe I'll just say first, I'd like to say ditto to Mike Graybill and Steve Miller and Jamie Faraday and Ashley and Annie Merrill, because I feel a little out of my element. But so first, I was sat down to write something, and I realized that the Coos Bay Estuary is the reason I exist, that I'm a second generation on my mom's side, fourth generation on my dad's side. They all came here and stayed because of Coos Bay, because of the Bay. And so I would like to...so I'm very happy to be here, that I exist, and to ask that you allow time for the community to weigh in and for volunteers to read the 900 pages and confirm that they are a faithful transcription of the current version of the plan. And I have two more things I'd like...and to remember that the Oregon Land use first goal is to...I'm sorry, I should have written this down, is accessible and inclusive community involvement. And last, I would ask that you please continue to do everything you possibly can to assure that the Coos Bay Estuary is protected from any and all future harm. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we have a hand up in the back. Did you fill out a sheet there, sir? Okay, well, is there anyone else who's gonna want to make a comment? We...what we don't want to have is, we don't want to have a succession of forms being filled out at this stage. So if there is anyone else who would like to make a comment, please, while the current comments are being made, please get that taken care of so that we can expedite this hearing. Yes, sir, the mic is yours.
Hi, Darrell Smith. I'm one of those people you probably, most in this room, would say, "Uh-oh." I'm in the industry, and in particular, I'm in the treating wood industry. And one of the things about the estuary is that everybody is involved in it. It's not only business that you guys might look at, but you have to understand, in the things that we do, we are regulated.
See, we're addressing the...
Excuse me.
Thank you.
We're regulated. We have stormwater. We have air quality. All of these things are regulated by EPA, DEQ, you know? There's...so what I'm saying is, is I understand that we want to protect the estuary. We have all kinds of means to do that. But you know, what I have found is there's more detriment from people, from people dumping their trash, defecation, all these other things that are going on all the way around our bay, from coming down the Mila Coma, Allegheny, Larson. You'll find campgrounds. You'll find all of these things, and they're not being regulated. But we're regulated. You understand where I'm coming from here? We're regulated. There needs to be some things done about what is ending up in the estuary. And I'm talking about fecal matter. Not only that, you gotta think about that. With all this going around, it's gonna dry up, comes in the air. Ask what's going on in Portland right now with the spread of disease. I guess what I'm saying is, is we all have to participate in this, and I think participation is good. You have good comments. I don't particularly agree with everybody that's here, but I think that too many people think that business is bad. For example, the man that just taught, he doesn't know about the pellets, pellet...putting in a pellet, taking the wood, making it into pellets, and they're gonna ship it offside. Okay? So it's one of those things. And some...huh? Yeah, thank you very much. The pellet mill. And the other thing is, you know all those logs that are shipped out of here? They're all privately owned. We have 104,000 acres up there in the ellot we're not touching. We let it grow, and now it's too expensive to cut because we only can ship it to three mills that can cut it. You understand where I'm coming from there? So we don't get money for the schools. We don't get money for...we don't get money for the roads. What I'm saying is, come on, don't blame it on just one group of individuals. And I realize that some of us haven't shown up, but I'll volunteer to help. You know what I'm saying? What...I just...business is good, and we need it. Our kids are moving out of here because they couldn't find...mine are in Boise. We need jobs. We need to get this done, and we need to do it with some common sense. We need jobs, we need to get this done, and we need to do it with some common sense.
The two bits were... Thank you, sir. All right. Zee, I think you're up.
Thanks, Rod.
Nice to see you.
Good to see you. It's a great day to be alive. My name is Artist Anzala, is that too loud? Back up. But I go by Zee. I live in Banden, 5317, 3 Morrison Road. Dead end, uh, no active dead end in Coos County, I'm sure of it. Potholes everywhere, but we're, uh... We're not talking about potholes, we're talking about the estuary.
Gravel is being hauled to Morrison within the next couple of weeks.
Far out, okay, great news, thank you. Okay, so here's the real story. I'm a kayaker. I'm sure many of you are. Many of us love outdoor sports because we're living in a great place to live. Every day I'm envious of me. I come up to Coos Bay to swim at Mangus Park, which is right now out of order, but we're getting there. And when I go to the valley, I always go up 101. And I sometimes kayak in your estuary here, right by the McCullough Bridge? Is that what it's called, the Long High Bridge? And then it goes the long strip before you get to the, uh, the north side where the stoplight is? So one day a friend says to me, why don't you kayak that bay before the bridge? Okay, so one summer day I did. I forgot how windy it gets at about 3 o'clock in the afternoon, but I did it anyway. So here we are, check off my time here. So I'm out there and I'm paddling and I took a spot where the oyster area is, where, uh, right over that company is. It was really hot... Pardon? Thank you. Make, yeah, we're finding a problem here, so live it up. So here I am pulling my kayak down and it was an interesting pullout. It probably was a parking lot at one spot. I kayak and it's pretty high tide at that point, so I didn't think much of it. But the wind did come up. Paddled for a couple hours, did the circle, got back my, got back into my truck after the kayak got put back up. And then I decided to visit these friends on the other side of the estuary. And as I'm driving on the low part of the bridge, I see this tree that's just to the right of the, uh, the stoplight. And it's alight, it's filled. I couldn't even count how many, as I'm driving, that's a good idea, of egrets. Just not 100, not 1,000, but more than I could count as I'm driving, you know, 30 miles an hour. And I thought, what a holy place to live, God, that we get to see this kind of animal, creatures that I can't create. And I just want you to know, whatever you choose to do, however you hurry this up or slow it down, that is a holy moment that I want all of you to realize how blessed we are to live here and how holy it is to see wildlife in multiple numbers. We're here to take care of them. Thanks.
Thank you, Uzi. Okay, in the absence of further comment sheets, I believe that our testimony is, uh, ready for closure. Staff? Are there any other, uh... Are there any other questions or comments from the board? Well, I, uh... I'm, uh... I'm a little confused on the order here, so...
No, I think he's right. I mean, basically, um, I summarized what we're doing. We are considering the ordinance and all the happens to the ordinance, considering the regulation. You'll need to do two motions to do that. I'm sorry, I forgot. Chelsea's reminding me. So you're, uh... You're here to consider that. So you've heard a lot of comments today, there's been, um, some suggestions to continue the matter. Um, you know, the documents have been available, we have had a very public process. Um, you know, we've had a public process since the beginning. We started this, this whole concept in 2012. In 2015, we received funding to actually start the formal process. It's been a public process. We've had open house after open house after open house. So it is a little disheartening to have somebody come in at the last minute and say that they would left out the process. I would never want to leave somebody out of the process. But I do believe in order for us to have a starting point to get to where we need to be, we need to adopt the plan as one plan. Otherwise, you're asking these committees to go through three different plans, three different codes, and that's a huge task for anybody to do. Your pages are 600 and some pages. Imagine that, multiple. I mean, that's a lot of documents to go through. So what we have done is hired the consultant. We have, um, went through extensive process to make sure that we have combined those into that one document. This doesn't mean that this is the end of this process, it's a living document. We know this. Legislative amendments happen. You find things, you change things if they're warranted. We're not asking to change any uses or any activities. We're not asking to change anything that would be allowed. If it was allowed before, it's allowed going forward. The appropriate time to evaluate that is when you get the document, as Goal One says, in a technical, um, a better technical state so that it can be evaluated. And then create the committees and do the process correctly to move forward with a full comprehensive plan update. If that's your... If you want to move forward with a full comprehensive plan update, that's also part of the resolution and that's something you have to decide, too. So that's basically all I have. There wasn't a lot of, um, testimony that was... It's all, it's all valid testimony, but it wasn't relative to the criteria. Nobody said, you know, this doesn't meet Goal 16. This doesn't actually meet Goal One and this is why. They just said, Goal One, we want more comments. Well, that doesn't actually meet the criteria. So it's really up to you guys what you wanna do.
May I, if we ask a couple questions?
Yes.
We've been at this, I mean, we've had the documents out for an entire year.
It is correct. We have, we have slimmed the documents down, but they have been available.
John, can you speak in the mic?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes. Uh, the, the first question was to make, I wanna make sure that I understood... There. Try it again. Thank you. I wanna make sure that I understood things correctly here. The first thing was that the documents have been available for a year now, over a year now.
Correct.
Two. This isn't a question, it's a comment. The next one is, uh, it's been put forth that there's no rush to get this done. Well, I can tell you there is a rush. This has taken a lot of money and a lot of time on behalf of the county and I'm sure on behalf of the cities. And I can't speak for them, but it's money we don't have. So we, at some point in time, we've got to say, let's do this and let's move forward with it. So this is not a free process. I haven't heard anything tonight, and again, I'm not real good at all this planning stuff. But I haven't heard anything at night about anything that would prevent it, be prevented by moving ahead with what we're trying to do here, and that is combine what is now three documents, each of which has to go through this whole process into one. It would seem to me that that would simplify the process and make it easier for people to have comments, uh, that pertain to our estuary. So am I mistaken in any of those assumptions?
No.
All right. You said we needed two actions.
Yes, you have an ordinance in front of you and you have a resolution. The resolution is to commit to a future process. And the ordinance is to adopt the changes which would combine the three plans.
I have a motion before me here that unless either of the other two commissioners...
Do you have comments?
I would, I would, uh, move to adopt ordinance number 2306005 PL in the matter of amending the Coos Bay Estuary Management Plan and zoning and land development ordinance. Count, pardon me? Well, have, I got more, I'm not done yet. County file number AM-22-005 and instruct staff to incorporate responses to the testimony in the record. The decision is based on the record and compliance with the relevant criteria identified in the staff report. I think the evidence, yeah, the essence of that was the motion.
And do we have a second?
I said it now.
Timing is everything. All right. Any other discussion?
Amongst us, no.
Amongst us.
Evans, no.
I'm just reiterating what John said about...
You gotta turn your mic... And pull it to you.
I would reiterate what John said about the plan revisions were released back in December 27th of 19, or 2022. It's been more than a year for people to review this plan and make substantive comments. Now, we're gonna have a committee later on and they're gonna go through it and all that, which will be helpful also. So there'll be plenty of time for additional review and any clarifications.
All right. Any other? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed?
The next thing you have is the resolution.
I don't know where the resolution is, Jill.
It should be attached in your bigger document, your staff report.
Too many documents, Jill.
Sorry.
It's all right.
It's attached to the staff report?
Yes.
This staff report?
I think so. Yeah.
Oh, okay. Where?
Hold on. No, um, eight. Hold on.
We're looking for the resolution, folks.
I'll stall for you.
Is the resolution in the agenda packet?
Uh, no, it was, it was in, I, I was told it was in the staff report. I don't know.
Okay, the resolution...
I feel like I'm looking at it.
So the re, the resolution is Coos County Board of Commissioners Resolution Number 23... Can we have quiet, please?
Can we have order in the room, please? Everybody, thank you very much.
Coos County Board of Commissioners Resolution Number 23-12-262 PL. And this is the resolution that was originally put in the draft memo and then it was changed to say Board of Commissioners, but the language remains the same. It's the commitment to moving forward with, um, the bigger plan revision, to seek funding, but not without seeking funding, we're not making any funding commitments. And then to, um, enact the advisory and the technical advisory committees.
Okay, so we don't have that resolution available to us right now?
I thought that you should have had it in one of your packets, but...
Well, this, this packet is like 500 pages, so...
Can we move on with the other part so that, or do you have it here?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. I move approval of Resolution Number 23-12-262 PL, a resolution of the Coos County Board of Commissioners, Oregon financing, evidencing the commitment to coordinate with city of Coos Bay and city of North Bend to work toward the completion of a comprehensive update of the multi-jurisdictional Coos Bay Estuary Management Plan.
Very good. Do we have a second?
Sir.
Any discussion?
Sorry for the... No discussion.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Okay. Resolution is passed. And, uh, I believe that concludes the county portion of this proceeding. Thank you very much.
Hi.
Hi, we're up next.
Um, and so we have, um... So before me, I have the, um, Joint North Bend City Council Agenda here and then we'll move into the public hearing ordinance and so forth. So I'm gonna go through the call the meeting to order, public comment and all that. I don't have a gavel. All right, so I'd like to officially call to order the Joint North Bend City Council, Coos Bay, um, City Council, Coos County Commissioners, uh, uh, meeting to order for January 10th. Um, after calling the meeting to order, I would like to open for public comment. So we'd like to always say thank you for participating in public comment this evening. Public comment period is an essential part of local government meetings. Each person has three minutes to speak. Our governing body takes input into consideration. However, in observance of Oregon Open Meeting Law, this isn't a time for dialogue, but rather a time for us to listen to you. Um, we have our, uh, city staff and city recorder are taking notes of any action that's needed. So do we have anybody signed up for public comment for North Bend's, um, portion?
This is not for the, this is just general public comment at this point.
Okay, so we're looking for general cover, public comment. And we didn't have anybody sign up for that? Okay, um, so then, um, then number three on the agenda would the pub, would be the public hearing for adopting, um, by reference, the CABMP into the North Bend Comprehensive Plan Ordinance Number 2070. Um, so now I can go into the public, um, hearing portion. This is the time set for a public hearing on Ordinance 2070 and ordinance adopting the 2023 Coos Bay Estuary Management Plan as part of the city of North Bend's comprehensive land use. At this time, I will open the public hearing. And I'd like to ask, um, our counselors if there are any conflicts of interest or any ex parte contacts to report.
So I already recorded this to our city administration, but I have met a few, um...
I have met personally with a few people in this audience concerning the, um... Mike, where are you, raise your hand. Jan Hotter is wonderful wife. So those, those have gone on and just listening sessions.
Okay. All right, at this time, can I ask the staff to please present their report?
Can you hear me? Okay. Um, Madam Mayor, members of the council, I'm gonna keep this as brief as possible. So before you this evening is a one-sentence comprehensive plan amendment that will seek to update an outdated reference within our comprehensive plan. This amendment will delete, uh, the text "Estuarian Management Segment and Shoreland Boundary Map" and add the text "Coos Bay Estuary Management Plan." Updating this reference will bring Coos Bay, or rather, North Bend into alignment with Coos Bay and Coos County on the management and implication of the Coos Bay Estuary Management Plan, uh, here in reference to the CABMP. It is important to note that the county has already adopted the plan amendments and we are simply referencing the singular plan as a functional document to guide our land use within North Bend. Planning Commissioner viewed and recommended approval in their regularly scheduled October meeting. And the changes that have been made, uh, up to this point, at your direction, um, this phase have, of the update has been rolled back to simply combine the plans, get it digitized, update the headers and titles and reinstitute a robust citizen involvement program. And a line-by-line review of the document has occurred in order to confirm that no substantial changes have occurred inadvertently. A memorandum of that, uh, information was sent out to you on December 28th, 2023. We did receive public comment, um, on the proposed changes to the CABMP and County Planner Joe Rolfe wrote a response to the comments, which was sent out to you January 8th, 2024. And some supplementals were sent out, uh, this morning. While these comments pertain to the CABMP as a plan, they do not pertain to the legal process before you tonight, which is... process before you tonight, which is again a comprehensive plan amendment, simply updating a reference to the cabemp. The process is, as outlined in NBCC, North Bend City Code 18.84, titled Amendment Procedures, has been followed in advance of this public hearing. Staff finds that you can adopt Ordinance Number 2070 to adopt the 2024 Coos Bay Estuary Management Plan as part of the North Bend City, the City of North Bend Comprehensive Land Use Plan, based on the facts and findings that the proposal complies with the Oregon statewide planning goals and the City of North Bend Comprehensive Plan provisions and policies, and meets the criteria set forth in the North Bend City Code for Plan Amendment Procedures. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Okay, and does the council have any questions for city planner? Okay. I will now open the public testimony portion of the public hearing. Written testimony has been entered into the record and provided to members of the council and staff. There is a time limit of three minutes per speaker, and each speaker must state their name and address for the record. Did we have anybody for the public testimony portion?
So if we spoke earlier, do we speak again? Are things?
I'll look to the staff on this. Usually, if something has been said, we would look for new testimony or information, or a representative from a group that has something new to add. I took it as you were addressing us as well.
Yeah, me too.
Yeah, so all of the written testimonies have been entered into the record, and we have a recording of this meeting as well. It's important to note that, you know, we're not adopting a separate plan. We're adopting a reference in our comprehensive plan. And so if there's anything additional to add based on the criteria of NBCC 18.84, then this would be the time to do so.
Okay, I see a hand over here.
Is anyone representing any of the tribes here tonight? On the council?
Is a council member? Is, we do not have any tribal members on our council.
Does anyone remember last time, who said that, you know, mentioned that?
I think that was for participation at a later point.
So yes, that is covered in Resolution 3341, which we are also hearing tonight.
All right, if there, so, um, okay, so, um, so there's been the written testimony that's been entered into the record, and I'm not, is this a, so we have one person signed up for the portion that I'm in now for the public testimony. Is that it? Okay. And so that's Mike Graybill. Now, I have to say, I am, come on up, Mike. I am a little bit more of a stickler on time with the three-minute comments, maybe, as opposed to our county and our city of Coos Bay, just in fairness for equality for everybody. So I'm going to ask our staff if they could monitor that three-minute time for us and let Mr. Graybill know when it's time.
Thank you. My name's Mike Graybill. I live in Charleston. There's three different bodies making three different separate decisions this evening. We're in our third joint meeting because the two, at two previous meetings, we discovered sort of glitches in the proposed revision of the plan. The county has now adopted a plan, but that doesn't necessarily compel either of the two municipal jurisdictions to concur with that decision. You have an independent decision-making authority. I have offered suggestions. There have been a number of people who have offered to assist you in reading and reviewing the plan and augmenting the capacity of your staff. I can tell you that if you've discovered three glitches, which they've been identified this evening, there's definition issues, there were other things, they've been corrected, but that, the fact that this is a very large, complicated document that you've discovered three discrepancies in suggests that there might be others. And there's an opportunity to engage a group of people in this community willing to help you check for others. I can tell you that the moment a permit drops, whatever version of the plan is in place locks in. This is not a living document when there's a major test of the estuary management plan in process. We learned that in past history. So if a major development happens while we're in the process of developing the, reviewing the next phases and doing subsequent amendments of this plan, whatever's in it now will be what we have to live with. And a couple of these glitches that we've identified have actually been fairly significant. The one example that has been corrected is the priority given to where dredge material would be disposed, whether that would be disposed in the bay or in the ocean. That's a pretty big difference. If there are other glitches, and that was a transposition of two letters, the letter F and G, there was just a simple typographical error. I don't think that was intent of the contractor that was commissioned to do this work. But it suggests that a very careful read of this should be taken place before you approve it. We have a number of very large-scale proposals before us, pending, that will lock down the provisions of this plan in whatever form it's in when that permit is, when that permit is requested.
Thank you. All right, I believe that was our only comment then for public testimony for the hearing? All right. Well, if that was the only comment, then I will go ahead and now close the public testimony portion of the hearing. Do any members of the council have any additional questions about this matter for the staff? I did want to see if the staff wanted to address any or respond to Mr. Graybill's comments that he made.
So I think that it's important to note that in North Bend, our development code, so Chapter 18, which is where the majority of my work is when I'm reviewing plans and documents, already explicitly references the cabemp and outsources that to the singular plan document. So we're not changing any process that the city has. We're simply updating a reference as code maintenance. And the text of our comprehensive plan outright references the Coos Bay Estuary Management Plan. It's just in the functional plans, it has the updated reference. And so that's what we're seeking to update as code maintenance.
Thank you. That was helpful. Well, if there's no further discussion, I will go ahead and close the public hearing. And then I believe that would take us to Ordinance 2070? Okay.
Could I have anything additional for you on that?
And.
I won't have anything additional for you.
Okay, and now with, as we walk through the Ordinance 2070, typically, this is, I don't see, we have, we have attorney, is Mark Wolf online? Okay, I couldn't see very well. So this brings us to Ordinance 2070, an ordinance adopting the 20, or the 2023 Coos Bay Estuary Management Plan as part of the City of North Bend Comprehensive Land Use Plan. I will now ask the staff to give the report, and I believe our city planner has indicated that he has nothing further. Correct? Thank you. I'll now entertain a motion to have the first reading be by title only from one of our councilors.
I'll make a motion. Should we have the first reading by title only? Sorry.
Okay, I heard a first from Counselor Garboden, a second from Counselor Gall. Is there any discussion? All in favor of the first reading of Ordinance 2070 be by title only, please say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Wolf? Oh, actually.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah. Are we good?
I believe so. One clarifying question that may be for the, the city planner, is the ordinance I'm looking at specifies the 2024 Coos Bay Estuary Management Plan?
That is correct.
Yeah. Very good. So Ordinance Number 2070 and Ordinance Adopting the 2024 Coos Bay Estuary Management Plan as part of the City of North Bend Comprehensive Land Use Plan.
Do I need to make any corrections since we said 2023 earlier? Is it, or, Mr. Wolf, was there any correction that I needed to make? Are we okay?
I, we're fine to proceed. It's the 2024 Estuary Management Plan that has been discussed here tonight. It was just a.
Can you turn his volume up just a little bit? Do we have the ability to do that? Oh. No, okay. You having a hard time hearing, did you? Yeah. Hearing me? Oh, Mark, I'm having a hard time hearing you, so if you could, if there's a way to.
Is this any better?
Was, say it again?
Is this any better?
Slightly. No. No?
I will talk very loudly and get very close to my computer.
Thank you. That's, that's better. So I will now entertain a motion to have the second reading be by title only from a counselor.
I move to read the ordinance by title only.
I heard a first from Counselor Jones and a second from Counselor Nordoff. Any discussion? All in favor of the second reading of Ordinance 2070 be by title only, please say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So that would be.
Ordinance Number 207. Can you hear me okay, Mayor?
Yes, just as loud as you can.
Ordinance Number 2070 and Ordinance Adopting the 2024 Coos Bay Estuary Management Plan as part of the City of North Bend.
Okay. So then that would, I believe that would take me to the portion to make a motion, or to entertain a motion. So I will now entertain a motion to adopt Ordinance 2070.
I'll make a motion to adopt Ordinance 2070.
Okay, I heard a first from Counselor Hamilton, and I believe a second from Counselor Garboden or Gall down there. Okay, Garboden. So I had a first and a second. Is there any discussion?
I just wanted to say that I hope that the volunteers who are willing to read the three plans line by line are willing to read the plan, the single plan that we're putting together. That's a huge shift and improvement in what we have to all put our eyes on, and I hope and expect the community to step up to that. I also want to acknowledge that everybody here in this room loves this place that we live, and the way that we protect the generations ahead of us, particularly the seventh one, is by managing to work together through the second and third and so on. So we really need that collaboration and willingness to shift our ultimate visions of a grand distant future so that we can make choices together. And I know we all understand this. I just want to say that out loud.
Any other comments from the councilors? I do want to take a moment and say how much I appreciate everybody participating in this long process and coming to meetings after meeting, sending in testimony. I know we all take a lot of thought and consideration in reading that. Everybody up here on this diocese, you know, you think about the years and the generations of people who are connected to this community and how much we all love the estuary and the bay, and we want to all be good stewards of it. I appreciate the industry for coming tonight and speaking, and everybody who is just looking out for taking care of this area that we care so much. So thank you. All right, so we had, we entertained a motion to adopt Ordinance 2070. We had a first, we had a second, and we have a discussion. And then I need to take a roll call vote. Correct? Okay. Counselor Nordoff, how do you stand for the ordinance?
For the ordinance.
Counselor Gall?
For the ordinance.
Counselor Garboden?
For the ordinance.
Counselor Hamilton?
For the ordinance.
Counselor Jones?
For the ordinance.
And I too am for the ordinance. So, okay. Now, I believe that would take me, do we have another section?
Yes, we.
The advisory committees.
The Resolution 3341.
Okay.
Yes.
So that would be the public hearing regarding the makeup of the various advisory committees and committing to future phases of the cabemp Resolution 3341?
Yes.
Okay. Well, this is the time for a public hearing regarding the makeup of the various advisory committees and committing to future phases of the cabemp and Resolution 3341. At this time, I will open the public, or I will open the hearing. I'm going to also ask the councilors, are there any conflicts of interest or ex parte contacts to report? Same as before?
Yeah, same as before.
All right. I'm hearing a comment from Counselor Jones from, and that, or, I'm sorry. Yes, Counselor, yes, you. Will the staff please present their report? Is there anything new to add?
My apologies, Madam Mayor. So, Madam Mayor, members of the council, this item before you is a resolution that addresses a lot of the public comment that we've received up to this point. The resolution qualifies the future updates of this plan and establishes the makeup of the citizens advisory committee and technical advisory committee. This resolution shows a future commitment to planning for the future of the estuary and a commitment to citizen involvement in that process. This is a joint resolution that Coos County has just adopted, and Coos Bay will hold a hearing on directly after us. And that is what I have this evening.
I'll now open the public testimony portion of the public hearing. Written testimony has been entered into the record and provided to members of the council and staff. Of course, there would also be a three-minute time limit per speaker, and each speaker must state their name and address for the record. Is there anybody wishing to speak in favor regarding the makeup of the various advisory committees and committing to the future phases of the cabemp and Resolution 3341? Okay, are we having the participants fill out a form if they're speaking?
Correct. They'd sign up with our city recorder.
Okay, so if there is somebody who is, if there's anybody wishing to speak either in favor or opposition, please see our city recorder, and then we can have that, because I saw a hand raised over here. So, do we have? So to our city recorder, you need some documentation of anybody speaking for this portion?
Just name an address.
Okay, so go ahead, and if you want to come to the podium.
I would like to request that someone from the Divine Nature Academy be involved in the, in the, 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 committee.
Okay, all right, I believe our.
Divine Nature Academy.
Thank you. We'll go ahead and make a note of that comment. Thank you. City recorder, were you able to get that information? Thank you. Okay, all right. It doesn't look like there is any further testimony, so I will now close the public testimony portion. Do any members of the council have any additional questions about this matter?
From what I've read, that we were, we were trying to be more general, so that it would be a hiccup of a group resolved or wasn't available. It was supposed to be kind of big block categories rather than specific entities. That's what I read, so.
Is this a comment for the staff? I'm sorry, what's the, what's the question for the staff? Is it, is?
It was, I, I was reading the background information. I thought that we were going to try to keep the advisory committees to general categories rather than specific entities. That's why I'm questioning that now we seem to be accepting specific entities, and I'm just making that observation.
Is the staff want to respond to that?
So. That is absolutely true for the plan. We wanted to keep it general in the plan because as future needs change, resolutions can be updated to include more bodies as needed. And so this clarifies the intent. This resolution clarifies the intent.
Is that helpful?
That does not say that your sponsorship or your request could not be put into the advisory group under one of those categories. I'm sure it can be, but I think our goal was to not specify by name a particular entity, if that makes sense to you.
Real legal, no, I'm, I'm.
I understand.
So Counselor, Counselor Nordoff?
I understand what you're saying. I just.
Yeah. Thank you.
I just want to be involved with, I have two pieces of property that will be, that will be affected by what we're doing here. I have no idea.
Thank you, thank you for your comment. We're going to go ahead and, and move on here. Thank you, appreciate that, and hopefully that clarifies the question.
Made a note. We'll be in touch when we are selecting for the advisory committees.
All right, thank you. All right. Well, if there's no further discussion, I will now close the public hearing. I will now entertain a motion to approve Resolution 3341, a resolution of City of North Bend, Oregon, evidencing a commitment to coordinate with Coos County and City of Coos Bay to work toward the completion of a comprehensive update of the multi-jurisdictional Coos Bay Estuary Management Plan. That is the motion that I will entertain.
I made a note that we adopt Resolution Number 3341.
Okay, I heard a first from Counselor. Okay. I heard a first from Counselor Gall and a second from Counselor Hamilton. Is there any discussion? All in favor of the motion to approve Resolution three three four one, a resolution of City of North Bend, Oregon, evidencing a commitment to coordinate with Coos County and City of Coos Bay to work toward the completion of the comprehensive update of the multi-jurisdictional Coos Bay Estuary, Estuary Management Plan, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I believe that, I, yes. I believe that concludes North Bend's portion. Thank you.
Okay. It'll be Coos Bay. We'll call this meeting to order. And I first want to mention that Counselor De novo was not able to attend. She has a family member with medical issues. Counselor Stevens is out of the area, so she's not here obviously also. And I believe Chelsea, that are the comments that we've received from North Bend and the county will also become part of our record. Is that correct? Before we get started?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor. That is the intent.
Okay, hopefully. All right. So I'll go through some procedure here, and then we'll take the comments when they're, when it's time. So I now open a public hearing on the land use applicant one eighty seven dash two three dash zero zero one six five dash P L N G. Proposal to make the Coos Bay Estuary Management Plan Phase One related amendments to the City of Coos Bay Comprehensive Plan and Development Code. Today is January tenth two thousand twenty-four, and it is seven fifty-one P M. My name is Joe Benetti. I'm the mayor of Coos Bay, and the city council will make a final decision on this application based on the complete record, including the testimony received at tonight's public hearing. These proceedings will be recorded, and as has been mentioned in the past here. The hearing will be conducted in accordance with the Coos Bay Development Code and state law, O R S one nine seven point nine, uh, seven nine seven. Specifically, the city staff will first present the staff report and recommendation. Then, for public testimony, I will ask to hear from the people who would like to speak in favor of the proposal. Then I will ask to hear from those in opposition to the proposal. Finally, the people who have a neutral comments or questions about the proposal, neither for nor against, will have the opportunity to speak. City staff may then present additional material recommendations based on the public testimony. After each presentation, I might ask for the questions from the council. For anyone wishing to speak, we're asking that you sign in at the sheet, which I have here, but if there's more, just let us know. Christine in the back there will be glad to help you with the sign in. Sheet has been provided. When called upon speak, you must state your name and address for the public record. When asked, that each speaker limps themselves to no more than three minutes. We have a timer that most people have recognized and will adhere to that. Please remember that all presentations will be timed. You'll be informed by the city attorney. We don't have a city attorney here with us this evening, so we'll refer to Chelsea, who's our planner. When you allotted the, when the time's expired, or I will step in and allow, let you know when the time's expired. All speakers exceeding the timeline will speak, asked by the mayor to immediately conclude his or her remarks. In order to minimize repetitive testimony, organizations are encouraged to have only one person speak for the group, with other members of the organization standing to show their support. Each person may testify only once unless called back to the podium at the request of a council member to respond to a question. If you would like to include the City of Coos Bay's land use record, a comment you presented during the Coos County Public Hearing on County File Number A M dash two two dash zero zero five, you may simply state the fact in lieu of repeating the entire comment. Thank you for your cooperation. Conflicts of interest, ex parte contact bias. The council requires disclosing conflicts of interest, expert card, expertise, ex parte contacts that we have had with proposal of applicant. That is whether we have financial or other personal interests in the proposal, and whether we have spoken with anybody about this proposal outside of this hearing. I will start. Do any of the council members wish to make any disclosures? And I will start. I had a disclosure and discussion with Mike Graybill and Jamie Faraday. Anyone else?
About four forty-five yesterday, Ashley and I spoke about it, as mentioned earlier.
Anyone else?
Yeah. I've had a conversation with County Planner Jill Rol.
Okay.
I've had a conversation with Rogue Climate Staff as well.
All right.
I had none.
All right. So that takes care of that. Okay. So for both types of conflicts, personal and financial, please announce. And we did that. If none, move forward. And we have done that. Are there any challenges from the audience on the conflicts or interests of ex parte contacts or bias related to any of the members of the city council? Are there any? Hearing none? Okay. Counselor, do you feel, counselors, and do I do one at a time on this? On the, they can be objective decisions. Can everybody believe that they can make an objective decision based on limited to the evidence presented? Answer yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Yep.
Everyone's in agreement?
Question.
All right. Requires statements. The state law requires me to tell you a number of things at the beginning of the hearing. First, the applicable substantive criteria applied to this application are contained in the notice of the public hearing. The written staff report and will be identified and discussed in the oral staff report, O R S one nine seven dash, or point seven nine seven five A. Second, your testimony, arguments, and evidence must be directed towards these criteria or other criteria in the Comprehensive Plan or Development Code that you believe apply to this application, O R S one nine seven point seven nine seven five B. Third, failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the decision maker or other people an opportunity to respond may preclude appeal of a decision on this application based on this issue, O R S one nine seven point seven nine seven five C. Finally, to the applicant, failure to raise constitutional or other issues relating to the proposed conditions of approval with sufficient specificity to allow the city to respond to the issue precludes an action of damages, four damages in circuit court, O R S one nine seven point seven nine six three B. A decision by the city council may be appealed to the Land Use Board of Appeals, L U B A, C B D C one seven point one three zero point one one zero five. Okay, the proceedings. We will now hear from the staff who will go over the staff report. Chelsea?
Okay. Mayor, council, we have the last public hearing of the night, certainly not the least. This proposal for Coos Bay is what we constitute as a type four land use review for legislative amendments. Our criteria, apart from applicable statewide planning goals and consistency with our comprehensive plan, we also need to comply with Chapter seventeen point one three oh, which talks about the procedures for the land use review, and then Chapter seventeen point three six zero, which talks about how you process plan amendments. Tonight, the Coos County held their pub, Coos County held their public hearing. They adopted the updated Coos Bay Estuary Management Plan. North Bend followed suit and adopted the county's plan by reference. So this plan now is meant to be a multi-jurisdictional plan. It's integrating all three of our estuary management plans. To ensure plan consistency moving forward, we need to, A, repeal our version of the estuary management plan and replace it with reference only of the, the overall Coos Bay Estuary Management Plan. And we'll do that in our comprehensive plan. And then, B, we need to make changes to the text of our development code to ensure that our implementing ordinances align with those changes. So the changes proposed for the City of Coos Bay, our comprehensive plan, is just that. We're going to repeal volume three of the city's comprehensive plan, that is the current standalone estuary management plan document. I'm going to lose my computer. And then we're going to replace it with adoption by reference of the county plan. Changes to the Coos Bay Development Code, we're going to repeal and replace in its entirety Chapter seventeen point three five two, which deals with estuarine and coastal shoreline uses and activities. And I know that sounds major, but it's not. There's no substantive changes being proposed. It's simply reformatting the text to make it easier to read, easier for staff to implement, and we add some clarifications about it current procedures that are existing. So new things that pop out, we're identifying the estuary management unit types. We're identifying the approval criteria for the city's estuarine and shore, coastal shoreline uses and activities permit. We're clarifying that the uses and activities in the estuary management units need to be reviewed for compliance before you can go and do something. That's, that's happens today. We're clarifying that if there's a conflict with the plan and our development code, the plan controls. That's true today. That's how we implement it. And we are setting forth the application contents and review process is as outlined in our chapter on procedures. So that's just making it more efficient for the user to understand. We're also proposing changes to Section seventeen point three six zero point zero two zero, which talks about who can initiate a legislative amendment. Currently, staff can't do that. We have to get a planning commission's recommendation and council's approval to move forward. And that takes time in a process that is just taking staff time and resources to do that. And we already have to go before planning commission and city council. So to allow the director to just make the initiation of the amendment just makes the whole process more efficient. So that's part of the proposal. Just a brief background, in the Coos Bay's agenda packet for their public hearing, there's a whole outline of the record in the city's matter. It points you to previous city meetings, meeting materials that have been presented to the city. On August eighth, two thousand twenty-three, our planning commission reviewed the proposal, and they did recommend council approval. They also recommended council pass the resolution evidencing a commitment to pursue these further comprehensive updates to the plan. At our last joint work session, decision makers directed staff to dial down that proposal, and that's what we did. We brought it back, talked about it at the work session, and again, the county adopted that, and North Bend followed suit. So the proposal for you tonight is no, there's no substantial changes. It still does just what we started off with in the application for the city. We're replacing our estuary management plan with reference to the county plan. That just takes what we had and integrates it into that overall plan. And then we're making the needed changes to our comp plan and our development code to make sure that all the changes align. We know there's been many, many, many comments throughout this process, and those have all been addressed. Tonight, I'll reiterate, as the mayor did at the beginning, all the comments from Coos County's public hearing, we will just automatically enter those into our record. And if you have anything new, though, please feel free to comment during this time. I would say, we know the, the primary concerns have been that we don't want to see changes to the management units. We don't want to see changes to the uses. We also want to know that there's going to be broad participation when we make those major changes. And I think all of that, those concerns have been addressed. Some have asked for delay in adoption. And reiterate, this has been going on at least since January twenty twenty-three. Multiple opportunities for comment. And all that primary criterion for us is consistency with the statewide planning goals in the comprehensive plan. And staff believes that the proposal does that. So as presented in the draft council findings, believes council can approve our land use application, one eight seven dash two three dash zero 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 one six five dash P L N G, subject to the changes that were accepted by all and adopted by Coos County. And if approved, council is going to need to enact the changes by ordinance. And you have two of those, one for the comprehensive plan changes, and one for the changes to the development code before you. And you will also want to pass the recommended joint resolution that evidences our city's commitment to partner with Coos County and North Bend to pursue those further updates. That is all I have.
All right, thank you. At the moment, right?
At the moment.
Okay. Now we'll hear from any person, other person in support of the proposal. Each will have three minutes. And then I'll ask if there's any oppositions, and then we will hear from anyone with neutral. So at this time, we have two names on the list, and I'm not sure if you're going to be in support or not. That's Annie Merrill and Michael Graybill. Either one of you, are you both in support? You want to speak in support?
I would like to speak to the proposal.
So you want to speak neutral then?
Sure.
Okay. So is there anyone else that wants to speak in support of this at this time? All right. Now we'll hear anyone in opposition to the proposal. We have one, another one? Ashley, did you want to speak in which? Opposition, support, or neutral?
I wanted to add on to my comments, so I guess I can go now?
In support?
Uh, yeah, I'll, I'll be neutral.
Okay. All right. So Annie, you're first for neutral. And you have three minutes? Oh, Annie? Thank you.
Hi, thank you. Yeah, I would like to roll over my comments from the county. However, I just wanted to add some additional comments. It seems that there were some quite inaccurate statements made that the public has had a year to review the plan that was just adopted. That's just untrue. We got a completely new version of the plan just weeks ago, on December twenty-eighth. This new version of the plan has new text and quite substantial amounts of text that the public has only had, you know, four days to review before the written comment period deadline, and then only two weeks before this hearing right now. And that seemed to be completely dismissed, that we're looking at a different plan than, right now than we were just three weeks ago. And so that's, that's just one thing I really wanted to call out because I didn't think that was a very fair statement to make. But the other thing is that we are still concerned about the definition of structure that was just adopted in, in the Coos County's version of the plan. But that, as Chelsea mentioned at the beginning of the work session, that was a Coos Bay definition that needs to be updated. So I would just recommend that that definition be updated to tighten it up because it's inappropriate for the definition of structure to be limited to walled and roofed buildings, including a gas or liquid storage tank that is principally above the ground. That just fails to recognize other structures that are super important for implementing the Coos Bay Estuary Management Plan, you know, including docks and undersea cables and, you know, dykes and so many other kind of structures that are, are no longer applicable here. So that's maybe something to look forward to in a future revision. And that's all I'll say at this moment. Thank you.
All right, thanks. So Chelsea, you want to address this? So first of all, that they've only had four days to respond to this?
Yeah. So, mm. Oh, I was like, is that me? The, the changes have substantially been out there since January, officially June one was when the applications were submitted. If anything, those changes have been dialed down. So if one has been following this process the whole time, they would be familiar with the overall scope of what was proposed, and now there is much less. I will add that staff did do their line by line review that was requested at the last work session and presented a report with the work session packet. And so it goes through and explains the reasoning for why changes were made.
Which we have before us.
And you have that before you. So I just, I think that this process could go on for as long as it would take for a hundred percent of people to be comfortable. And I don't know that that's a reasonable way to go.
Okay. And also, also as mentioned about the definition of this, of the structure?
Yeah. And so I said at the beginning of the meeting, and I'll reiterate, our definition of structure in our implementing ordinances has already been updated to align with the floodplain regulation definition, and that is what is in the estuary management plan at the county. And so that's the one that would trump anyways for, and for-
Because we would have one plan if we got this, right?
If I may, I, I looked it up. It's actually FEMA's definition.
Correct.
It's FEMA's definition. So that's the federal definition of a structure for some reason in floodplain world.
Yes, thank you.
Thanks. All right. Mike Graybill?
Thank you. My name's Mike Graybill. I live in Charleston. I filled out this form. I wasn't aware. I don't know if you're aware or not, but this is the public comment form. And the first line of that form says, "The City of Coos Bay values our citizens' input and participation." I would just offer that, think of the decision before you. There have been a group of people here, given three minutes segments, to offer perspectives on a thousand-page document. There has been no other mechanism for any kind of coordinated discussion or more- or more in-depth discussion of how this thousand-page document might be structured. So yes, there's been a year. It's been out there. It's been a moving target. The last revision of that moving target was some days ago for the seven hundred pages that were circulated at that point. Think of the impact of the decision you're making. If you value citizens' participation, these two other jurisdictions before you have just made a decision to change a plan, and they have rejected requests by citizens to offer suggestions or to even to read it, to be given a structured opportunity to read it. I've made proposals to ask you to designate a committee to read the draft version. There is only one draft version, so it doesn't have to go through three jurisdictions. It would be possible to create a structured opportunity for a cadre of volunteers whose values, whose input is valued, to offer you a perspective on that before you decide. The impact of your decision this evening, if you choose to go forward with the proposed, with the proposed changes, is to basically say, "We're good changing this plan without an in-depth input from citizenry." The simple request that I have made repeatedly through this three-minute segment opportunity is just to say, "Give a group of volunteers an opportunity to read this and offer their perspectives to you." I smell a fait accompli.
Thank you. So I don't, do you want to make a comment, Chelsea? Or you want me to start? Or how do you want to go?
I don't, I don't think I have more to say to that end.
So you know, Mike, I, I, I'm going to push back a little bit, just that's the only way, three-minute comments. First of all, written testimony, much of it's been submitted. I've seen it here and rightfully so, and I appreciate it. I think that's wonderful. That's part of the process. There's been a consultant that's had public hearings three times. And then we've had these meetings three times. And at the last meeting here, unfortunately, I was not in person, I said, when we postponed this, to take more testimony and more information, are we going to make a decision tonight? I asked this body collectively if that's what they would do, and they said yes. So we're at that junction. Do we, do we think that? I don't believe that this is the last part. As our discussion on the phone that we had, and I still believe that, I, I don't agree with your process of how you want to proceed. I believe that we can adopt this, and then we can still have public input into this by that committee, which will be a diverse group. And that committee can dictate how this moves forward. And I believe that can be accomplished. And I believe it can be accomplished and satisfy everyone's need. And therefore, the other thing I mentioned to you on the phone, and I'll reiterate, and it was Jamie also that I said this to, that if we just had you go out as a committee independently and do this, it just becomes a public record. It doesn't become a, a part of this process, which I think is important to do, to move this forward. So this has been involved, started in two thousand twelve, not just a year ago. Two thousand twelve is when this started. And I can tell you, Don Ivy went to the county commissioners and asked them to review this and to look at it. And that started this process. And that's where we're at. We're, what, twelve years out? And we're still just trying to get started. And I think it's time to get started. And I think it's important to realize this is a living document. I know that there's some hesitancy whether that can be changed or not, but I don't think that's the case. I think we'll have a diverse group, industry. I hope, Mike, that you apply however the process is and get on this committee because I think you're valuable to have that input. And I think we can get there, and we can all accomplish something that we care about, and that's the estuary. Okay? So Ashley, you're next.
Okay, for the record, my name is Ashley Dickey, and I'm a representative of the organization Rogue Climate that has an office here in downtown Coos Bay. I just wanted to respond to a comment that was said earlier about the comments during the county hearing not meeting the legislative criteria ordinances. I tried to get that clarification. I actually emailed a chain of attachments to the planners today about correspondence a few weeks ago about like, what is the criteria for tonight? And like, what community members should be including in comments? And I have a file here that if I scan through it, it's, a lot of the responses were very vague. So if folks wanted to have like, goal sixteen mentioned, goal seventeen mentioned in comments, that was not clearly communicated, at least on my, from my communications with the planners directly. So it just gets a little frustrating hearing folks' comments be discredited if they're not matching particular criteria. And I say that just because, who, who's an expert in rules? It's like, it's not an easy process. It is complicated, and it's complicated for a reason because there is so much at stake through these development processes and how we evaluate permits. And really, that impacts our community in terms of economic, ecological, and cultural livelihoods. So I just wanted to note that clarification has been asked. And just scanning through my emails, I don't see any direction in terms of like, oh, you know, should say goal sixteen in comments or goal seventeen and trying to, you know, maybe, maybe it's out there somewhere. But I don't know if y'all have the different packets and reports and everything. It's just a lot in terms of, you know, if there are specific things that community members have to say in order for their comments to be really considered seriously by all of you, it really needs to be upfront and centered or even, I don't know, maybe it was up here on the table, up in the front? I don't know. It's hard to keep track of everything, and I want to note that. But I don't think people's comments should be fully discredited if they don't meet, you know, citing zero point whatever ordinance or whatever. See, I'm, I'm bad with numbers. I'm bad with words, so it's hard to keep track of it all. But I just want to note that people are here because they care. And, you know, again, we don't want to create more roadblocks in this process. Just want to be able to have a, you know, a seat at the table and be able to communicate with each other. And, you know, however we can make things more accessible for folks is really what's important. So, you know, if there's something that I missed, believe me, I'm learning a lot when it comes to this. I didn't think when I started this job I would know as much as I would know at this point. But there's also so much that I don't know. And that also, I know I'm in a position of privilege to, you know, learn that. But also for the community members, like, I love you all, but who's expected to know, you know, exactly how to do this process right without clear communication? So just wanted to note that for right now. Thank you.
Yes.
Thanks, Ashley. In comments, go ahead.
Yeah, I guess I would just reiterate that the criteria for these amendments, they're always in every notice, and they're always in the staff reports. So there's that. And then also to reiterate that the goal of this, this, the outcome will be that we will have a more streamlined process. There will only be, the county will be taking the lead. And so there won't be the three different jurisdiction meetings, three planning commission, three councils. So it's going to be much more streamlined and easy for the public to participate and to understand what's going on. They won't have to follow so much. So that will be a good outcome.
All right. And I, we appreciate everyone's comment, Ashley, whether it's pertinent to the certain goals or not. It's still on the record, it's still going to be considered. And I appreciate everyone showing up and making any commentary and participating in this. All right, is there anyone else that hasn't signed up that wants to? Okay, hearing then, we'll move on. We also have received written comments which are included in the record and have been reviewed by the city council. Okay, may we please hear any rebuttal from the staff? There's no rebuttal, or is there?
No, I think we've kept up.
Okay. Do any councillors have any questions for Chelsea? Or we make a comment here either? Sure?
Okay. I just wanted to note two things. In the Ocean Shores proposal that I liked, there was an inclusion for the purposes of the advisory committee to include natural resource protection and for the technical advisory to include unique environmental and social values. We have that addressed in our proposals here. The advisory committee is also going to include a citizen with environmental interest, one with environmental or conservation background. We've got public health. And then down in the technical advisory, that's actually fairly heavy with advocates. It's got marine biologist, we've got the watershed water quality, and we even tucked in a sociologist, which is pretty cool because that's my background and usually we're fry cooks. So it's nice to see us included. But, yeah, just those.
So just carry on, just for clarification, sure everyone knows, what's going to be the process for these individuals to apply for this committee? So they understand that there is going to be a process they can participate in?
So the committees are appointed by the board of commissioners. The way it works is we put a publication out. We also send it to a list of people that have signed up. You apply. You appoint them in a regular board meeting, or you can have a work session to do it. That's up to how the board wants to do it. The steering committee is very strict on who's involved. But the other two committees just give you the general categories to include people. So you're just going to have to explain how you meet one of those general categories, what your interest is. I think the application says, like, what's your availability? Are you available for day or nighttime meetings? It's pretty simple application.
So it'll be publicly out there so people know how to go forth? Anyway, so I hope that you do, and everyone does. All right, do any councillors have any further questions before we close the public hearing?
I, I don't have a question, just more of a comment. And I just want the folks to know that, you know, the public comment was made about discounted or discredited public testimony that was provided either written or here at the podium tonight. And I, I think that for me personally, I can't speak about anyone else, that I don't ever discount any comment that is made based on whether or not they cited a goal. I think every comment has to be considered, and, and I do listen. I think that's one of the most important jobs that we have as an elected official.
Okay, so that being the case, I'm going, anyone else want to make a comment? Any councillors?
I'd just like to put my comments in. I think we're hearing a lot that the community would like more time to review. That is the general comment majority. And I would share their concerns in terms of just trying to go through this massive document and process. It, it's difficult. As a volunteer, someone who doesn't get paid to do this on, is doing this in their free time, it's a massive undertaking to look at all of this. And I am struggling to comprehend what you all are trying to say as well. I'm, I'm sorry, but I am. And maybe I'm not the right person to be sitting up here at the dais. I don't know. But I am, and so I'm just going to share my, my stance that I feel like I want to get this right the first time in every step of the way. And I have not had ample time myself, not because you haven't given it.
Three separate governing bodies are going to work as one to manage our estuary, which is not three separate estuaries, it's one. So for me, that's encouraging. And finally, I suppose I would say no action before this body tonight is antithetical to any of the testimony heard this evening or any other meeting.
All right, thank you. And, you know, Carmen, I, I understand where you're coming from. I try to, you know, comprehend this and understand it. You know, I'm not a planner, and I've read, I've learned more than I intended to learn, and there's so much more I need to learn. So, you know, I don't think it's, we're not in that realm. And we have people in place from three different entities that have gone over this in detail and have made recommendations. And I think we've been abundantly cooperative in allowing public testimony. And I know that the individuals want more and want more time. But I think truthfully, I believe that we can get there through this process and get it started. I guess that's my point. Let's get it started and get it going. And I think we can accomplish what we all want, is to take care of the estuary. And it's been in place for forty years, and now it's time. And been, and it's been approached twelve years ago that it needs to be changed and looked at again. And that's what we're doing, so.
I agree. And in rebuttal, I think this particular plan is extremely important. Yes, absolutely. We are here because of the bay. We all want to make sure that it's taken care of. It is our bay. It's not just one jurisdictions. And I, I mean, I guess I just want to do my due diligence personally.
Sure, of course.
To make sure that I'm making the right decision. And this is not to disrespect all the valuable input that you're giving us and saying like, this is what we have done. And, I mean, honestly, we're just having to trust you if we don't do the research and look at it all ourselves. And that's, I guess, what I'm just trying to come across. And I think that's what everybody else here is trying to say, is that we can hear you and we can trust you, which is great. But there is this desire to go through this line by line in the public and say, and, and you guys have addressed a lot of these line by lines. But in, you know, in response to Mike Graybill's comments, there's all these things. We've seen these things, and we would like to, you know, they, they get addressed, they get fixed. But what happens if we miss these things? What happens if we miss some little letter or number that gets transposed? It's scary. It's a very important document, and it will be scrutinized for decades to come. And all I'm basically saying is I'm feeling undergunned in general. So while I do support all the work that we're doing as these collaborative entities, I'm hearing something that I feel from the public, which is, I need more time to digest. That, that's all.
Yeah, and I understand where you're coming from, and I understand where Mike and Jamie and the others and Christine and Jan. But at some, where does that end? And so, and I think it's important to get started because what we are going to be dealing with until we start and do a change is what we have. And are we happy with what we have? Well, that's not what I've heard. You know, the reason in two thousand twelve, Don Ivy went to the county is because he felt it needed to be changed and addressed. And we've been waiting twelve years for this process. And so if we don't do anything, then we're going to have and use what we have now, which I don't think anyone's really pleased with or happy with. They all think it needs to be changed. So I think that we need to start this process and make the changes.
I think everybody is in agreement that it needs to be updated and changed. The thing is, is that yes, once we adopt it, it is that then. It is what we will be dealing with for whatever comes tomorrow or the next day. Whatever's in place right then and there is what we have. And so I think what they're, the general public is asking for is just more time to digest. And I understand it's like, every day, there's another delay. We need more time, we need more time, we need more time. I completely share the frustrations with everyone that they don't want to have more time. They will want to just, just go forward with it. But I, I understand the frustration on the other side that I want to know exactly what it says and make sure that I'm comfortable with it.
Okay.
So I, I'm just, I'm just putting it out there. I have not done my due diligence as a citizen to go through this with a fine-tooth comb. And I would like to. And, and that's just me admitting that I have not had, I have not made the ample time that it needs. That's all.
So for clarification, from whomever over there on that side right there, the three of you, it was stated that once this is initiated, it's set. And can you clarify for Carmen where we're at if something is decided? What happens?
Yeah, so again, this proposal takes three plans as they exist, as they've been adopted, combines them. And so there is, there are no changes there that will be substantial enough to, to cause the kind of concern that's out there. And I get that there's a desire to want to see for yourself that. But staff has done that review and has made sure that's the case. And then if there, there are any conflicts, the goals always prevail. So this plan is based on goals. And if by chance something has been misconstrued, conflicts with it, the goals still apply. And, and that comes down to more of those. with it, the goals still apply. And, and that comes down to more of those policies and procedures, because the uses aren't changing. We're not, we haven't changed any uses. We haven't changed the boundaries. So there's that. And if, and when, if there's a problem, it's a living document, and we can change it at that time. And so I guess, I don't have a good answer how to, to resolve the issue that people aren't feeling comfortable with the proposal today. I, I don't think that I can do that. But to say that we've done the review, it's simply three plans merged together. So there's not substantive changes that are being made today that are going to impact how we are regulating the estuary tomorrow. That will come from us establishing these committees and them taking the time to review the uses, the management boundaries, and saying, oh, this is a problem. We think that should be changed. That's going to come out of that work. But until we get through this phase, we're really not in a good place to even start that. So-
Oh, completely agree.
So, and that, so I guess my point was, then I asked them to chime in, because there can be a change, Carmen. That's the whole point behind this.
I completely understand that. Living documents do change. But when you put a permit into place, it's locked in for that particular time.
Sure, but right now-
You, you won't be forced to change based on-
You're right.
-a moving target.
You're right, just like Mike had stated earlier.
Yes.
But here, here it is. That permit can be filed now, and it would follow the old cabemp plan.
Well, it would follow the new, updated-
Well, if we don't do anything, it follows what's in place.
Yes.
Which I've understood from everyone, that it should be changed.
The, the worry is that there's going to be something that, with these three plans colliding, there might be some kind of thing that doesn't.
Is it, my question is, does combining actually streamline the process and make it easier if there is an issue that has, that develops?
It streamlines the process for the legislative amendment. It's not changing your uses. It's not changing your policies.
I understand it's not changing uses.
So let, let me, let me explain just a little bit. So if for some reason, there was an appeal, right, and let's say we made a huge mistake, and there was an error between what the plan was and what was adopted, that would go to land use board of appeals. Land use board of appeals would send that back to us and say, "You have a procedural issue, county, and you need to fix it."
Okay, that's good. So, you know, I'm looking at this from a legal point, standpoint. Will this hold up in court if there's like a transposed number or a zone that wasn't listed properly?
Right, that's what I was just explaining.
That, that's what I'm looking for. And, you know, it's, it's important to me, because we don't have our, our legal counsel here to tell us exactly. I'm not saying that you don't understand the law, but it's nice to hear it from multiple points of view. Not saying I don't trust what you're saying. I'm just saying, I want to be thorough, on behalf of everybody in this room and who isn't here. That's all I'm saying. So I've said my comments. We can move on.
No, I appreciate it. No, that's what this is about, truthfully. All right. Anyone else? Any other comments? Anyone else? All right, that being the case, we're going to move on. So the planning commission, after having conducted the initial public hearing on this matter, recommends approval. The city council, after hearing, having conducted the second public hearing in this matter, and considering the record, including all public comments to date, can approve this land use application as set forth in the draft findings and final decision of the city of Coos Bay. So the council, the city council can take action. They can approve. They can approve the changes, or they can deny. Where do I go from here? So I need to know if you want to make a motion to approve the land use application. 187-23-00165-PLNG, subject to accepted revisions based on the information presented by the applicant, all evidence in the record to date, and recommend finding of approval as presented.
Yes, I have that motion. But I want a clarification. Do we have to pass that land use application and then enact the ordinance after that? That's a two-step?
Technically, it's ideal that you approve the application, the land use application. You approve those changes, and then you confirm it by enacting the ordinances.
Okay. So then my motion stands at approving the land use application, 187-23-00165-PLNG, et cetera.
Second.
Okay, there's been a movement, a second to approve the land use application. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed?
I'll abstain.
Okay.
Can he abstain?
What was the question?
I think our charter allows you to abstain.
Okay, nay then.
Okay.
You're asking if he can.
All right. And then enact an ordinance confirming those amendments authorized to the Coos Bay comprehensive plan. Enact an ordinance confirming those amendments authorized to the Coos Bay development code, and adopt resolution 2401 as proposed, evidencing the city's commitment to the complete and comprehensive update of the Coos Bay estuary planet, management plan, including an inclusive public engagement process. So I need a motion to do that. A decision adopted by the ordinance becomes final and takes effect as specific, specified in the enacting ordinance, CBDC 17.130.11044.
Again, have another motion, but again, clarification. Do we enact the ordinances and then adopt the resolution separately?
Yes.
Okay. So my motion is that we accept that, enact an ordinance confirming those amendments authorized to the Coos Bay comprehensive plan, and enact an ordinance confirming those amendments authorized to the Coos Bay development code.
So do I have a motion?
Second and second.
And second, good. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Do we have to do roll call on an ordinance?
Do we need roll call on this one?
Do we need to read it?
Christine?
Yes. The first one, an ordinance repealing volume three of the city of Coos Bay comprehensive plan 2000 in its entirety and amending the text of volume one of the city of Coos Bay comprehensive plan 2000 to update estuary-related policies and strategies. Counselor Cribbins?
Aye.
Counselor Matthews?
Aye, I think.
Counselor Benetti? I mean, Mayor Benetti.
Aye.
Counselor Farmer?
Aye.
Counselor Kilmer?
Aye.
Sec, ordinance number 572 has been duly enacted. An ordinance repealing and replacing in its entirety the text of chapter 17.352 of the Coos Bay development code, to align the code with the Coos Bay estuary management plan, and amending the text of section 17.360.020 of the Coos Bay development code to increase efficiency in amendment procedures. Counselor Matthews?
Aye.
Mayor Benetti?
Aye.
Counselor Farmer?
Aye.
Counselor Kilmer?
Aye.
Counselor Cribbins?
Aye.
Ordinance number 573 has been duly enacted.
All right, we need a resolution to adopt as a proposed, evidencing the city's commitment to complete the comprehensive update of the Coos Bay estuary management plan, including an inclusive public engagement process.
So moved?
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Comments? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, it passes. A decision adopted by the ordinance becomes final and takes effect as specified in the acting ordinance, CBDC 17.130.1104. An appeal of this decision must be appealed to the land use board of appeals within 21 calendar days after the land use decision becomes final, CBDC 17.13.105. That's it. It concludes the meeting. I would thank everyone. We adjourn to Coos Bay city council. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.